We are unmuted at this point. Nona, thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for attending our meeting today. I had this nice little speech made up to tell you, but I left it home. So just remember that you get to speak once for three minutes and please let's all be polite and wonderful. And I think at the end of Ms. Akko's piece of paper, let's, let's enjoy ourselves during the meeting. And so, all right, a call to order 1204. Are there changes or additions to the agenda? I don't know what you changed. I don't. Okay, so I just have one question.
Okay.
Okay, under the policy review, it says mission statement, action item. And under the minutes, it says that we will send the mission statements to the policy committee. So that way we go back there, right?
I had a request by a board member that it be brought as an action item to today's meeting.
Okay. The old policy, I mean, the old mission.
The one that is currently on file and approved by the board.
Okay. So, we're good? Okay. Let us move to minutes. We, I asked you all to study your minutes and your financial reports. And if you have any questions, could ask them now, unless you have a session or a change. Questions on the line with them. This is 910 dollar charge for the River Press for the minutes. I was wondering if we could reduce the size of that because I mean, it shows everything for the month, but it's really, then you can just do it by the three thirty. As you go in there every day.
Okay, I can, I can talk to Bethany about changing or what it would cost to change that size.
Any other changes where we are? Let's, are there any other questions about the meeting or the budget for January? Then I would like to call for a motion to accept the minutes. Minutes and the financials for January. Make a motion?
I don't know that we accept the minutes and the financials for January.
Okay, is there a second?
Your point.
Okay, now we must have public comment, right? Okay, is there public comment on the meetings for January or the financials for January?
I've got a comment. You people speak a little louder downstairs so we can hear what the pressure is.
All right, we're gonna try and talk louder. How's that? Is that good?
No, this is a public meeting.
No, is that a good, is, can you hear that now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm a quiet talker and I tried to be louder. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Any other, any other thoughts?
My name is Shannon Walden and I just have, I couldn't hear Janet very well when she was talking about the 910 dollar charge from the River Press. And I was under the impression that there's a goal to reduce that charge. And I just would like to stay cognizant of sometimes when things get too small. I can't read. I also have hearing loss and, you know, so I would just say that I'm probably not the only member of the community who would not want that to get too small.
The advertisement.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any others? All right, we will vote now on accepting the minutes and the financials. All in favor, that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Okay, let's do it.
Jess, let me ask you. Thanks.
For Brad, your question. Is she on? Darlene, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Would you like to give your report?
We had carpet installed, starting January seventeenth through the twenty-seventh. We had twenty community members come and help us pack up the books and materials so we can move our bookshelves around for the carpet installers. We worked on, during that summer reading planning, as well as our continuing ad through Aspen. And we, with the carpet being installed, we were only open for fourteen days in January. And our spice of the month was nutmeg. That's my report.
Thank you, thank you. Fort Benton. Yes. Give you a minute.
Thank you. Um, so themes that we had as displays, not programming, but displays throughout the library in January included Lunar New Year, which was Year of the Snakes. We had a snakes' display, winter dystopias, Holocaust, robots, Jimmy Carter with his passing, MLK and other civil rights, different crafts, or books about crafts and games and JR art token. Projects included the new boiler installation, which I'm going to talk more about during the director report. We started free community bingo the last Monday of the month and the initial turnout was over thirty people from little kids to retired folks all the way through. So we were able to do that again this Monday. And the drinking fountain got delivered and was put in this month, and I'm going to talk more about that in the director report. Awesome.
Thank you. Geraldine, are you there? Sammy Jo?
Yes, sorry, I was having some issues with my headphones earlier. For January, we did, for themes, we did winter Martin Luther King Day, Holocaust, and then new books. And then for projects, Maren was able to teach me how to switch the spine labels to re-categorize all of our juvenile nonfiction Montana to just juvenile nonfiction. So it was eliminating a category that had very little in it. And I was able to get all of those completed and then just continuing to work on Democracy Project.
Thank you.
Um, there's no change from Highwood at this time.
Right, we turn it over to you. Emily, Director's Report. Director's Report, sorry.
So I did not send this out earlier. I was still working on it, but I did include a printed copy in today's packet. Um, in February, we were, I was working with, in collaboration with River and Plains and the Great Falls Public Library with funding from Humanities Montana to bring Hassan Davis, who does a living history presentation as York. So he lives in, Hassan Davis lives in Kentucky and he came to Montana to do a variety of presentations. He's been involved with the Lewis and Clark expedition history since their bicentennial celebration, so for about twenty-five years. And so he has been all over the country. He's done the entire length, I believe, if I understood correctly, of the trail. He has stood for, as a model for a bronze statue that was made at the Headwaters. Attendance was great, almost sixty people. Again, there were kids all the way through to retired people. That was the night of the very cold winter warning. So we had a sixty-person turnout, which I think Cindy told me, Cindy Bach told me that outside of like their Ken Burns one that they did, that's the highest attendance that they've had at a program of this type. So I found it to be a very, a very good presentation. All of the feedback that I have received has been positive about that and in hopes that we can do more things like that. Fort Benton Library building updates. So the boiler was installed. We talked about that a little bit in January, but then the boiler inspector came for a visit and found a concern with the newly installed new boiler. So I reached out to Matt McDonald, who reached out to the guy and back and forth. Matt hasn't been able to come yet because they're still coming off that cold weather. And so he was gonna reach out, so I let the inspector know. So that's in process. As soon as that gets fixed, I will let the board know. The drinking fountain was installed on February twentieth. It was a slightly more involved project than what we were anticipating, but he was able to change it out that day. So that is now working while he was here, because it's kind of hard to get plumbers here. He looked at the upstairs toilet. We'd been having problems with the flush and the recharge. He changed a filter in that. He took a look at our sink that had a slow drain, took care of that, and then he ended up replacing a broken faucet in this bathroom. And then the OSHA, OSHA inspector came, which was unanticipated, as he has, to our knowledge, not ever been to the library before. And I have not received any follow-up reports from him, so I will also let the board know if I hear anything back from him.
What did he do?
He, we walked around together. I had to show him. And we looked at fire extinguishers. Yeah.
Safety kind of guy.
Yeah, yeah. He, and he really didn't, I mean, there were some things, obviously, that he, like the fire extinguishers, but as far, I don't, it didn't seem like he had done a lot of libraries before. So I don't, I'm not the inspector, but I haven't heard anything back from him, which is hopefully a good sign. Um, program updates. I think I talked about this last month, but we're going to host an heirloom quilt show throughout April at the Fort Benton Library. Anyone throughout Choto County, if they have an heirloom quilt they would like to display can bring it for the whole month or part of the month. I'm hoping to work with the Quilt Guild to get some display racks. And then we will have an open house on April eighth in conjunction with National Library Week. And then Pathfinder update that I just received this week in via email. Our spring Pathfinder meeting is on May first. Reminder that the board will need at least one representative. We don't need to decide that today per the Pathfinder bylaws. And anyone, everyone can come. It's not limited to one. Chris Goss will be in attendance to provide training on library law and he looks forward to being out and meeting everyone who can come. So that'd be great. Does the board have any further questions for me about this or about anything else?
With the drinking fountain, was that the plumber that you said that was coming or is that separate? With the drinking fountain?
No, it was the same.
Okay.
He came back.
He did come after our meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Okay. Does the toilet seem to be operating?
Yeah, apparently there's a filter in that toilet that is a very fine.
Sand, sort of.
Yeah, and so he replaced that and it seems to be working much better now. Yep.
Thank you.
Did you know Peter, Peter was working during that whole spell?
Yes, the boiler's been great.
Um, announcements? How much capital plan that Montana Library Association, MLA in Bozeman? Are you attending?
Yes.
Are you using library funds?
Um, under the travel budget line, yes.
I think we should talk about that maybe at your evaluation.
Okay.
Yes, sir, we couldn't hear the, what the, what the meeting is.
It's the Montana Library Association Annual Convention. And then the heirloom quilt show in April.
Hey, any other announcement states moving on? Okay, let's go with the unfinished business. Mission statement, it seems to be a somebody requested one of us have the mission statement. Is that true?
Yes, I thought that since we have a calendar, it wouldn't hurt to just bring it to the board and if there's no changes, we can get it done. If there are changes, then back to the policy committee.
Uh, for the mission statement.
Um, I think we have four policies we're gonna look at. Now just two, mission vision, oh, second ring of the hotspot. Yeah, gotcha.
I would like to see mission go back or get to the committee because.
Is there one particular part you don't like about? It seems pretty basic to me.
I just wanted to see if there was something else out there that was more fun. Well, I would like to see it go back. Along with the vision statement, too, that those two will go back to the policy committee.
Are you, they just seem pretty, I mean, they're not a lot of content. I think the mission statement is basically for a book, for a reader, every book.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just, just, just for one meeting, you know, maybe.
Okay.
Okay.
The vision statement.
Yes, we've not even.
It's similar, it's five budget, or it's five bullet points, it's things like maintain a collection, provide access to technology.
Have we seen that?
Let's see.
So I think that's why some of these were done before, known as, so it should be open.
It should be in the policy binder that I gave you. That's all the updated policies. Yeah, it was approved in twenty twenty-two, but there's not a lot of content, so I thought maybe we could just get them done.
Can you read it to us, Kim?
Sure. Vision statement, the Choto County Library is committed to providing a center for reliable information that will address the needs of all age groups by colon, one, maintaining a collection of diverse materials. Two, providing access to advanced, advanced and developing technology, including internet access and ensuring availability of information. Three, offering interlibrary loan service. Four, sponsoring slash co-sponsoring and supporting community programs. Five, securing historical and current documents in a safe and secure environment.
I think I just read that last night.
Right, or there's not much to it.
Popped in, but yeah, yes, if, if everyone will discussion here, if we want. I think it should go back.
Is there anything specific you don't like about it?
I just, I I just think there's a better way. Okay, I have looked at them and that was done before we actually had a policy committee and that's why, and the policy committee is the ones that do set up the, the, the policies. So that's the reason why.
So you don't have any specific changes you want to do, but you would like to review it?
Yes. I think it's really general.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Uh, we talked about it, both of those going back at last meeting and since it didn't go back to me, to the policy committee, I would like to see it go there, since we already voted on them going back there.
I thought too.
If they're general, I think just reviewing it in the committee's.
It was voted in, in that first and second meeting, so. Okay, do you have to vote on that or we just send it back?
We just.
Yeah.
Yeah, we voted on it. All right. Hotspot agreement, second reading. Any discussion?
I felt like that's fine.
I guess I was supposed to also go back, though. I was trying if the dollar amounts are accurate. I think it says two hundred dollars for a total replacement value. Is that still?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So this one's pretty targeted than in with, than.
But this is just second reading, so we can't vote on it. It wasn't listed as an action item.
It just, I didn't see anything.
Okay, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Yep.
Is I don't see anything that needs to be
okay.
Added to it.
Okay.
A point, a policy committee, okay? I would like to appoint myself and Janet and him, I would like to not, to not be on there, because then we'd have a forum if you were.
I think from your previous email, it looks like the chairman does have the power to appoint committees.
I would like to do that. Do we need to vote on that?
Can you speak up?
Oh, well, I'm sorry, did that sound? I can do that. I mean, there should. We, we have to appoint a com, policy committee now and I'm putting myself on and Janet. And then I have, I do have a question. Can there be somebody from the, does it have to be just one of us or can it be like a a city person, a regular person?
Janet said at the last meeting that it comes from the Board of Trustees.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Do you want me to make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I would like a motion to appoint, have appointment of the policy committee, which will include Nona as chairman and myself. Is there? And, and. And I'm the director. Yes, yes, definitely. Okay. Um. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Right, we need.
I know, I think you have to have.
Public comment, okay, is there public comment on a new policy committee?
So you've had a policy committee?
There's been a policy committee for a long time.
Making a new one? She's, she's taking it back down to two, so there's not a quorum, so we don't have to have the, the public. You don't have to have it like this, where, where it's a quorum. So we're, so it's just them discussing it and then it comes back to here where everyone can hear it.
And discuss.
And it still has to be discussed by the entire of the board.
Yes. Yeah, and the, and have an action. And it never was, we've never had it. I mean, it was.
It's never been a quorum before.
No, and it, and then last one was not, was not active yet anyway.
We hadn't had a meeting since October.
Another question?
I just wonder if it would be efficient use of time to utilize already existing policies through the state office or through legal guidelines from the county attorney?
We, we have a whole list and we checked them off. Our wonderful director has set this up for us and we check it and we put a date, like when this policy is done and this policy and, and she keeps track of them for us. I think it's. There's twenty-nine policies. Yeah. Okay, so their most efficient time is to have a policy committee, look through and then come back to the board. And then when they're on the board, they go back to you. So it is, so it is.
And I would say Emily being as part of the committee brings in that legal aspect, because Emily's very, very knowledgeable about what's current library law, so she brings things in.
Is that it? Did it answer the question?
Yeah, I work in healthcare. I used to eighty-five policies, so. And, and a lot of legal input on them.
Yes, there's a question in the back?
Oh, just a quick one. The vision statement you read just seems to me to be quite concise and appropriate. It seems like a very very nice little, talk to me the way it is, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. But ask to back, you can't go on standing with, right?
Yeah.
We could if, if we made a motion, but it sounds like it would fail.
Okay. We, we have a motion for change of the policy committee and it's been seconded, right?
Yes.
So we're going to vote on it, on favor of the change. Say aye.
Aye.
Post?
Nay.
Well, new business, capital improvement committee report. That would be Rich. Is that right?
No, the committee is. Yeah. So Jess and I met here at the library and I am going to call on Rich to speak first, because one of the items that we were unsure of is the roof. But basically, we went through, Jess was president and walked through, we went through and tried to look at what capital improvements, what physical repairs to the structure we needed to do. Our unknown was roof repairs and Rich just presented, actually talked to the inspector, so I guess Rich, if you don't mind.
You bet.
Thank you.
On my way here today, actually, I got a phone call somewhere around Loma from a roofer that we had asked to do an inspection of our roof. And he's out of Great Falls and he went up there a few weeks ago and looked at it and said it's good. It doesn't need any attention. He says it looks like around a chimney, that'd be in the old part of the building, and there had been some leakage and repairs done. But even though it's an older roof, it's in good shape. And he doesn't think, aside from some attention to the gutters, which he doesn't do, that the roof itself doesn't need anything at this time.
That's nice. That's good.
Thank you, Rich, for taking the time to get ahold of him. We really appreciate that.
Welcome.
Stand up, so everyone can hear me. All right. So basically what we came through is, and we tried to order them, basically in the idea of, one, affording to do it and two, how urgent. So replacing the flooring in the cleashroom, we put as number one, because we're almost through with that. At this point, the foundation has approved the purchase of flooring. So that was our number one item in the capital improvement. Number second was roof repairs, depending on what we heard. At this point, it sounds like it's a gutter issue that, so that'll probably drop to the bottom of the list. Number three is bathroom repair and remodel for both the downstairs and the upstairs bathroom. In the downstairs bathroom, we had a request that we have the sink that we can wash dishes, craft supplies in. Let's see, we're also considering to reconfigure the stall down here, so it's more of almost two standalone rooms, correct, Emily? Or something. Yeah, so someone can be in there using the sink while someone has a little privacy. Let's see, we want to have a changing station in at least one, if not both bathrooms. That's kind of a big oversight for it being a library. There is one upstairs. Is there one? Yeah. Okay. And let's see, and we're considering new flooring in both bathrooms, just to update the look. All right. Number four, lighting replacement on the main floor. So the current light fixtures are outdated as they use fluorescent bulbs and ballasts. Changing the bulbs are kind of a safety issue. You need a big ladder and probably at least two staff for safety. With OSHA visiting, Emily was kind of a little bit worried if OSHA would notice that and come back on us. And we also think that this might be a particularly good time to look at grants, to get more energy efficient fixtures. If we do do replacements, they will be fitting with the historic nature of the building. Let's see, and like I said, OSHA is kind of a, a driving force there. Number five, this one's kind of a shot to the moon or kind of a far out there, but this entrance where it's handicapped, just the nature of the building and the lack of an overhang tends to have a lot of ice, which is not ideal for the handicapped entrance. So the staff is gonna look, maybe talk to a roofing specialist about if there's any possibility of having some sort of coverage there to prevent the ice buildup. Another kind of long shot, but something that'd be nice is to remodel the kitchen, which is through this middle door, Emily? Well, or to add to the other in there. Okay. More of a kitchenette in that room versus. There was an old kitchen kind of here between the two rooms, but at some point to get to the cleashroom, have access to a full kitchen for programming and for when people host events, clean up everything like that. Like I said, Emily weighed in on this, on how many of these made the library more or less usable. The kitchen and the overhang, those are both kind of like distant plans. The others, three to four are more what would you say, current? I mean, this.
Or necessary.
Necessary, that sounds good. And then talking about the cleashroom, Rich and I and Jess are all on the foundation board and we wondered if it'd be appropriate to have a discussion of just the flow of kind of maybe responsibility is a good word, about how, how comfortable the board is with us making quick decisions on certain things, like the flooring. Ended up being a quick decision because it is a remnant sale, so we need to get it while it's available. So we didn't necessarily take the time to have the board approve. We just wanted to have a discussion about the.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Yes. When we met in Big Sandy the last time, that would have been in the fall. But we, we decided with guidance from the trustees that although the foundation was active with the director in making, in investigating some of these property issues and in putting together a, a plan that the final responsibility for implementing that pa, plan belongs to the trustees and we're completely in agreement with that. Then, of course, as soon as we decided that, we ran into a wrinkle. And the wrinkle was that the foundation only meets quarterly and our next meeting isn't till May. And, and so, or April, I mean, it's the end of April. And so we had the need to make a relatively quick decision before the next trustee meeting. that's today, and it was because we were recommending.
The flooring purchase that was.
Flooring purchase that was time sensitive. So here's what I would like to ask, if we could, uh, in this process, we want to still honor the spirit of the trustees making the final decision. So we have two trustees on the foundation board. And then if there is a time sensitive matter, and it needs to be done before the next board meeting, the trustee meeting, if we have two trustees and then the chairperson is brought in on the decision, that would make a quorum and a majority. If we could, like we did with this flooring decision, if we could move ahead on that basis, would that be acceptable to you trustees?
Problem with that, Rich, is whenever there's a quorum, we have to have public opinion. We have to let them be notified, so that they are completely understanding what's happening with what we're doing.
Okay.
Ever gonna meet?
Well, if they're, like he said, if there's two of us and then the chair, that's still a quorum, saying that we're moving forward, so we still have to notify our public.
I think if we, if we did all three meet, but I think one-on-one, either you or I.
We need to make sure it's legal, you're right.
Okay.
So I have a
Yeah.
Question, a comment, um, so I thought that the discussion included the fact that if the, the board of trustees approves the capital improvement plan, then the foundation is then charged with like bringing it to fruition, finding grants that might be for lighting, for energy efficiency, things like that, so. And that's. That was my understanding.
And that's where we were backwards still, because we hadn't presented this to the board.
Well, and that, so that's like going, and this isn't an action item, so it will not be approved today, but like by then, there should be nothing, none of this now is.
Said it's don't.
It shouldn't.
Yeah.
Barring, barring catastrophe, like burst pipes or something like that. Tree falls on the roof, there shouldn't be anything comes up before the next meeting, so we could put this on the next agenda as an action item.
Yeah, I would like to see it by, you know, number one, two, and do each one separately as you get the information.
Um, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, part of, of doing it this way is that it might not be able to go one, two, three, like this is the order in which they, the committee felt important what-wise. But then if suddenly we find a grant that we can get ten thousand dollars to do lighting, that we might jump down to that one. Was that the understanding?
So if you're moving in November and December, we didn't have meetings. In November and December, we did have not have meetings, but twice, we had Zoom meetings in order to approve two things. I think it's very easy for us to be able to do the same. If something comes up, let's just have a Zoom meeting and, and we'll put it before. And in the Zoom meeting, we will uh, make sure that it's done forty-eight hours ahead of time, so that it will have public opinion, and it will do both then.
I like that notion.
I guess, I think, I think we're losing some of the benefits of having the foundation. Because as I understand, one of the big benefits of having the foundation is we can move quickly, because we don't have to notify, we don't have to have the forty-eight hours. But we're not a county, we're not a county organization, the foundation.
No, I know, but it said that library board shall have exclusive control of the expenditures of the public library fund, and then it goes on, and it says it has the power to approve the grants, donation devices and everything, but we shall be stepped back into the powers and duties.
So the, the grants, you don't like the idea of the foundation applying for grants without the board of trustees? Because our, our funds are separate from the public.
But you are doing something to the library itself. As a building, which is totally under the county, which has under the county, it is under the control.
So if it's a capital improvement, you want board approval? Because it messes with, it changes the structure. Okay, but if it's non-capital improvements, that's something the foundation is clear to move forward with?
Well, it's hard to say, because there are so many, you have so, you have different things involved in each one of these. It would just be, there's just no problem for you to have, just that the foundation don't have a trustee, because it has to still go through the public, or the public, so I don't see why, I think, just if, have it quick, little.
If we have, um, do we have to do forty-eight hours and all that stuff? To have a Zoom meeting?
Anything that has a quorum of the board, so if for the Pathfinder meeting, if there's going to be a quorum of the board at Pathfinder, we have to notice that, just that they will, there will be a quorum, but no business will take place, I mean, that's pretty clear in the.
Forty hours.
Well, I think it was fine to get the flooring as set aside, it wasn't, it's not like you're implementing it today and it's just over there, and.
I did want to add about that, and particularly, Tom came in, Tom Hayden came in, and we will not have to close at all, it's not a, there's no glue or anything like that, and since it's in the basement, we'll, yeah, just be open, so.
Thank you, and thanks for the foundation. I do have something on the kitchen remodel, if you'd like to hear it, let me just say, I totally trust. I totally trust the foundation members to make those decisions.
I do, I do too.
But it's still within the community custody.
But I think it's just slowing us down, if we make it run through both boards.
Forty hours?
Like this was a different case, it was
Yeah.
discounted flooring, we were, and it wasn't being implemented, and that's why we thought we could move ahead, and we took the time to talk to town. We were trying to go
Right.
Over anybody's head that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, the bathrooms and some of that are larger.
I think we understand that as a foundation, that we need, if it's going to happen in the library, that we will have um, board approval before we move ahead with that. That was the purpose of us bringing this before the board.
I'd like to tell you something exciting, if you haven't read the press, there is going to be a huge kitchen remodel to the atrium.
Yep.
To the tune of three million followers, and they'll live by word, he's president. So. I remember he was very climbing. So he actually, he, he comes.
Talk about afterwards?
No, I'm just saying that it is a great asset to the library, because there will even be a teaching kitchen in there.
That's why it was at the very bottom of the list.
Actually, do we need to put the capital improvement report on our next agenda then for voting?
I can make a note to have that.
I'm, I'm not asking, I'm.
For a first reading, we could do that as a first reading.
Maybe so that we can have those discussions about
Yep.
What is top priority?
And you guys could meet again to make some adjustments.
Thank you.
And there is five thousand dollars for windows.
Thank you.
Hey, we'll put it on those, we'll talk about next meeting.
I made a note.
Strategic plan, continuing education plan, is that you?
Sure, that could be me, I, I apologize, I'm a little stuffy, and I'll try to speak as loud as I can. Uh, Corey Sloan got ahold of Emily and I about continuing with our strategic plan meeting like we did at our last, that was January board meeting. So I did ask her if our March meeting would work, however, that's the MLA convention, so, um, we wanted to look into other dates that might work, maybe not even on our, um, actual board meetings, but if we could just get together and work with her, I think she said via Zoom, didn't she, Emily?
Yep.
So if we could find a date, work together on that.
I got the impression, I got the impression we really need a strategic plan by June.
Yeah, I, that's my understanding, but.
Yes.
Yes, we need to have something in place by June, and that's why I've kind of been.
That makes sense.
Um, trying to work with Corey and Emily about that. So if there's any suggestions of.
How big of a time block? Like two hours?
She is on the Zoom, do you want?
Yeah, we could.
Cool, I think, or was, is she not on there anymore? Oh, yeah, Corey, are you there? Oh, she said hi.
I am, hi.
Hi, Corey, we're curious if you have any time, um, that you're thinking specifically that would work to get together with us for the strategic planning?
I, I would encourage us to try, if possible, um, to meet before your March meeting.
Yes.
Um, yeah, in the interest of timing and getting this, um, there are some notes from your last session of things that just need, um, a little bit more information before we flesh out a plan. And then, of course, drafting a plan, and then going to the board for approval, um, by your Zoom meeting, hopefully, so working back on the timeline that way, I would think, um, sometime in March, I'm pretty free, except for that last week um, with MLA, and I know it sounds like Emily will be attending MLA as well, um. It is also suggested for strategic planning that you, community input. That can be done pretty informally if scheduling times and it's to have focus groups or something, um, doesn't work with a short timeline, but that's just something to consider as well. Scheduling the time for community input on what they'd like to see out of their library, um, in all of the communities that the Shottos County Library serves, so, um, I'm happy to, um, meet with you all virtually. Um, I could meet in person if given enough time to kind of organize a scheduled timing for driving up there, um. I'm open, I'm open, and I'm also open to weekends, if that's what works for you guys. I know that some people have jobs and whatnot, and so it's hard to schedule around that sort of thing.
How, how big of a time slot are you looking for, Corey?
I think, um, your last training with Kara was two hours, is that correct?
No, it was only an hour, and it was pretty crunched for time.
I would say make two hours to it, um, I would say that I would feel safe doing a two-hour plan.
So is anyone available next Monday or Tuesday for two hours?
Wow.
You are on Tuesday?
I would be on Monday.
So you're good on Monday? Okay.
I'm available as well on Monday.
So we got.
I guess I am.
Um, AM or PM?
Not, not eight in the morning.
Okay, ten. What's better for you, you've got the youngest kids.
I would say around noonish, because I lay them down for half.
That sounds good, what about? Well, and she can do it by Zoom. I think she has the youngest kids now, Corey does, so. No.
Oh.
No, you can do it from your home.
Clock, I could be in my jammies.
Right?
Yeah.
But, but what about noon on Monday? Would that work for everyone? How about you, Corey, would noon on Monday work?
We're talking Monday, March third?
Yes.
That would be great.
Yes, thank you very much.
I really appreciate you guys making time for this, and Kim said it, um, it is a requirement of the public library survey, um, which is tied to your funding from the state, um, to have a strategic plan, so I'm really looking forward to working with you guys, I'll see, I'll set up a Zoom and send it to Emily, um, so that everybody has access, okay?
Okay, and feel free to send us information in advance, so we can kind of.
Okay. That sounds great, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Should we ask if there's any discussion? How about we ask which items?
Well, no, because it's, it's executive session, it's that.
Okay.
Um, I waive my right to privacy, and this item is to be conducted as an open meeting.
I think it is your executive session as a board first.
Uh, that was not my understanding, well, I still am, since it's about me, it's up to me.
Okay, even the.
Yep.
We just.
I jumped in here with this other thing first.
Oh, sorry, I was supposed to call on Rich during strategic planning.
Sorry about that. I just was sitting there waiting to come in, um, my son's named Adam Jespersen, and he's the CEO of the Montana Not-for-Profit Association. The Montana Not-for-Profit Association serves the nonprofit community in Montana, and there's about eight hundred organizations that are members of that. So it's very widespread, some of them are very large, and some of them are very, very small. But it's the nonprofit community in, in Montana, and he and his staff do workshops uh, that, uh, I've been thinking about for us, and I'm, I would, would like to recommend this as an action item for the next trustee meeting in March.
To schedule, or to have the training in March?
No, to schedule something, and, and to approve it. Let me just read to you from their website, the kind of things they do. First of all, I'm just gonna read from this, but it says custom trainings. Looking for a custom workshop or consultation? MNA can work with your organization to create the right experience for your team. So, whatever are, are standing issues for board and staff, you know, we can tailor, work with them to tailor something that really fits our needs here. But among the things that they do offer trainings on are board basics, committees and calendars, better board meetings, board culture, board staff relationships. Uh, and then there's some fundraising things, which really isn't so much of an issue for this, uh, board, uh, but, uh, then there's some financial management stuff too, uh, but under management and leadership, there's, uh, workshops on delegation, building trust, planning and evaluation, advocacy and lobbying, volunteer recruitment and so forth. Now, these are, again, just broad topics. Uh, what I'd like to suggest is if you guys would like to schedule something that's a board staff training, about board staff relationships, that the chair and the director work, talk to my son and tailor custom design something that really meets our needs. But it may require some conversation among you all to decide what it is you think you need some help with. Uh, now, as far as cost for these things, uh, these are all trainings for uh, MNA members, and the library is not currently an MNA member. But MNA membership is anywhere from forty-five to eighty dollars a year, which isn't very much, and I'm gonna suggest that the foundation, I'm gonna, uh, make that a motion to our foundation that we cover not only the membership, but we cover the cost for training, and the cost for the training, for in-person training would be five hundred dollars for three hours or less, plus travel costs. Uh, and my son said waive the travel costs, we'll just come visit you. So with the grandchildren, so that's the general case. And, and I think that the board and staff, you know, wh- when I came on here, which was a bit over a year ago, maybe, you know, it was in the midst of some considerable, uh, conflict, and I don't want to resurrect that. So I'm not gonna comment on that, but just to note that board and staff have been through a lot. And it might be good now that the temperature's lowered, to do a training, to just get on the same page with each other, so that when we do move ahead, we move ahead with the kind of cooperation and collegiality that would really benefit the library system. So that's my little sermonette. Uh, but I'd like to make this an action item for the next council meeting, or trustee meeting, if that's all right?
Thank you, Rich.
You have any questions?
Would any of this work for us for?
Continuing Ed, that was my question as well.
I believe so.
Do you think this would be applicable for our continuing Ed with the state library?
Could Corey, Corey, could you speak to that, please, if that would actually count for our continuing Ed?
Would, yes, it would, um, as long as it's relevant, and this does sound like very relevant training, um. Absolutely.
Thank you so much, thank you, Rich.
Any other discussion on this?
No, I think that's great. No, I think that's great.
All right, you you wanna, you really wanna do it?
I do.
Could we, I would like us, I'm the chairman, I want, I want us to go in that room, not you, just for five minutes. I want us to go in uh an executive session, just five minutes. Is that allowable?
I think we are allowed.
This is Adrian Miller, if the executive session is about Emily, then no, it's not allowed. She has the right to waive her right to privacy and you guys don't have an individual right to privacy as members of a public board. So she's waived her right to privacy, if you're gonna be talking about her, you need to have it as a public meeting.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I should note, I'm not your attorney, you don't have to follow my advice, that's just my general understanding.
I just wanted to talk to the board for a couple of minutes, but if that doesn't work. Well, I was just wondering how, we've never had a proper. Um the two years that I've been here, there has not been a proper evaluation. And um we went through three different people to make sure, or I did and then Jesslyn helped too, we called. Um called Mako, talked to county attorney and talked to an HR person at this, at the count, at the state library.
So she is not with the state library, she's with the state of Montana. It's my understanding, she does HR for the state library, but is not a state library employee.
Yeah, and and so we feel like we're doing it correctly and we just, I've never done it, so.
I thought we did an evaluation of Emily last year.
With Tracy Cook was here in person for that evaluation, yes.
But no one, well.
Was it improperly done? How so?
We did not get to discuss the papers that we had written about her and and we just kind of.
And that it was taken away from you to leave it, you and Danny.
The evaluation? Because Tracy did it?
Can't even remember, it was not good, is it wasn't good. And I just wanted a proper.
What do we need to change from the last one to make it correct?
She did, it's been a year ago.
Done it, she said that.
Okay.
Went to three different people and she's prepared.
And I and I've been reading on evaluations and how to do them and what. What not to do, what to do, and I'd like to have them now. And if you now remember, you can't talk. Okay, just make that clear right now, no one from the audience can talk. If you do, you go out, okay? All right, we made, we all got together and did sheets, well, we filled out. And then um I put them together with a little help from Jesslyn because so we didn't do, we weren't a quorum. And um cause she can have better ideas than I do and so.
All I did was help her put everything into one document.
Yeah, and I didn't know how to do a document, so.
And we were, we were instructed to the, to do this by our Mako representative and by Steve Gannon, it's not something that. It's just willy-nilly, it is.
He tried to be really careful.
So are we talking about the content or the format?
The format, it's called a three sixty review and um this is the way it's performed.
Okay. I spoke with Steve Gannon yesterday morning and he does not know what a three sixty review is.
He has never heard of that. What came from um.
I'm just saying.
Steve gave us the form and then he instructed us to talk to Mako.
I would love another copy though.
Sure, and then Mako is the one that um gave the instruction that it's a three sister.
So could you define for me what a three sixty evaluation is?
All of the, since we cannot act as an individual and in as individuals as board members, we can't give you each individual. Um reviews. Reviews, yes, okay, so a three sixty is we each go through, give our number. And then you take the average of that number and that's what is shown at each. And then after that, you give all of your comments, so all the comments that everybody gave are on your form. Does that help you? Does that understand that, thank you.
Anybody else see a short break? Um let's see, you, did I read it?
Sure.
Okay, employee with Emily Wicks. For the first one, which was job knowledge, we gave her twenty. Says good knowledge of duties, well-informed, needs on the occasional direction, acquires, she's acquired more than one skill. She's worked very hard, Emily has excellent knowledge of her duties. She has worked hard to find the skills she needs and develop them. Emily exhibits a great level of understanding of the job roles than any director that I, that we have worked with. Or I I can't remember who said that for sure, but we, all of us here. November fourth uh two thousand twenty-four. Using use, we used the closing of facilities policy to close the library in Big Sandy without board approval. An executive director of all policies set by the Board of Trustees, policy should be used as written, not misconstrued. This comes after being told at the October twenty-fourth Library Board of Trustees meeting that all library closures. Should go through the Board of Trustees. So then we did have um, let's see, well, we did, we didn't have a Zoom meeting. So that was to go up and do the meeting, right?
Okay, so November fourth, Emily closed the library.
She, that was your Zoom meeting.
After we approved it with a Zoom meeting?
Yes.
And that's a poor or a good performance?
We had to do it. She did it before it was approved, she put it in the minutes, she put it in the.
So she like locked the door, closed it, or she just put it on the board meeting?
That the policy was misconstrued, so it was like just read incorrectly and that's why it was encouraged to have the. Zoom meeting after that.
Okay, after it was closed? Before?
No, this, so there was an initial, this is in one of our emails that we were going to. Emily asked to close the, call the, excuse me, the Big Sandy Library using that policy, but it's the closure. Policy. And usually, like we said in October, that the board should always have approval of when the library is closed.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, kid?
I can't, I guess kind of, it sounds like she didn't actually close it without our approval.
No, you had the Zoom meeting.
Right, so we approved it and then it was closed? Okay, okay. I think it's understood.
December twenty-fourth, December two thousand twenty-four. Stated that that deciding on the board boiler bid fell under three. Stating that the deciding on the boiler bid fell under daily operations, there fell under the director's umbrella. However, through the commissioner's instruction, this falls under capital improvement. With amount being discussed and the change of budget, needed a board of trustee approval along with the notification of commissioners. Prior to the Board of Trustees vote. That was a boiler.
I don't remember her deciding on the boiler, I remember us deciding on the boiler.
So we do the, what can commissioners update, approve that too?
Yeah, and I think she told, you went to the commissioners after.
I did, they don't approve it because the Board of Trustees is in charge of the budget. But that particular account is outside of the annual budget, so I talked to Cheryl and it is not a change of budget. It is not a budget amendment to the approved annual budget, is a separate account, but the Board of Trustees. Can approve expenditures out of. But that, I think you had talked to Bob Pasha, they like to know if that's happening, but that. You spoke with him and then I followed up and spoke with him, yes.
We did come back and and have, but it was not. Um under the directors' umbrella.
But I guess I don't understand the point of this comment. It sounds like we approved a boiler replacement.
I think that's just what she's saying is that. That we we made the motion that we had to approve the board. Had to have a motion to approve it because Emily had stated that it was under her umbrella when it is not.
See, what I remember is that Emily was very concerned about the boiler failing during an upcoming cold snap. And she pushed all of us as board members to have a Zoom meeting ahead of our regular meeting.
You just, we just did the.
You weren't on the, I thought you were on the Zoom meeting.
Yes.
To approve the boiler.
Yes, but it was later because we did not have a meeting in November or December. So it had to come before us, but she had used the app, she had said. And she had said this, we can look it up, if you need to, she said that was under the director's umbrella when it was not. Just move on to the next.
So she made a mistake in an email?
This is nitpicking and it's, let's go.
May two thousand twenty-four, another example of policy discrepancy and how it was read and construed. Specifically in the regards to the chairman voting. While the article the of CC law bylaws specific, it states that the chairman always votes. This is on recording in a special Zoom meeting that was held that lunch month, I didn't write this, so I don't know.
Yes, it is true, you were there, but what is it? What's it about, it's about, it was about.
Is this one Nona? Is this when Nona was appointed as chairman?
No, no, it was, no, it was me, wasn't it? No. Yes.
Oh, I see, that's what it was, now the chairman can.
Chairman always votes.
Okay, because we were told that, I think we were told that the chairman could not vote. Is that the chairman?
Yeah.
So so just to, just to circle, just to circle back on the larger thing, we're doing a performance evaluation of the director. And we are going to go into this level of detail.
Well.
Yes, this is silly.
Policies are set for reason and are not meant to be construed for purposes other than what they're set for. Okay.
These are my questions, um Emily, I commend you on the MSL certification and. At the last degree, I was curious, what new skills um that you have acquired over the previous year? And how do you feel that you've been able to utilize them?
Um through the certification and the degree in particular or um so the. The degree, at at one point in one past review, the board asked me to do more leadership training. And so I did more classes through my degree for that in particular and I have been trying, I know there is some. Disagreement in that, but I really have actively been trying to use those skills. Um through certification, that's a lot of forward-facing public, I do a lot of the um working with the public and that comes into. Just my daily interactions with people and what I'm off, able to offer, I cannot. I cannot name one particular class at this point or training that I've taken. Um, a lot of what I do through the state library as far as trainings go. I went to a GIS Zoom tree um training, so that talks about what's available through mapping through the state library. Um tax, legal. Um, library law, things like that.
Sure, and then in our library system, how do you see that those things you've utilized have been helpful?
Um for my general knowledge and in the services I'm able to provide and my interactions.
Thank you.
John, John, knowledge, Emily, you're very good at what you do. Emily is great with what she does with us for our trustee meeting, she's great understanding of her duties. And one-on-one conversations are always good. So.
She received a twenty, twenty-five quality of work was twenty, out of twenty-five.
Work is well done with infrequent errors, occasional review necessary, routine supervision required.
I have a question about that.
I don't know if I.
Um so. That doesn't, that definition doesn't match the rubric definition for that score.
The rubric.
I think that's the chart where we circle the numbers.
Apologize.
That's okay.
And I can edit that.
Okay. Take care of that second question. That's all, thank you.
Lined up very well, so I.
Great.
They were not, and this, and then, that's how Nancy didn't answer a couple, you had to fill in the numbers.
No, I did, I think I circled the numbers, probably didn't have any comments or something.
Like safety.
Okay, I think it'd be cool, but whatever. Emily, let's see, Emily is well motivated, she motivates, she moved a job and she has taken direction well. She knows what needs to be done and does it. Emily exceeds current expectations and all the requirements of the position. She excels at taking initiative and job requirement, she exceeds current expectations, so you actually work more than. You 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 help us more than.
Past directors?
Well.
Are necessary.
You go ahead of what you uh you.
Above what we ask.
I would say that's accurate. I think after the last review, you had finished our request for you within three or four months.
While delegation of work is just fine and is part of a director's job, specific job duties that have been defined. In the director's job description should not be delegated. Specifically speaking to purchasing of books, this should be a director's job and not the assistant directors as defined by the job description. We would just like you to take on. The 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 whole book thing has become kind of a mess, so we would like to, or I would, I don't know.
Wait, are are you saying you want her to take over purchasing for all branches? I thought Big Sandy picked its own books.
Job duties that she shares with the books.
Do you finalize what books are purchased? And is that what you see as that being your part of that job description? So how do you see Maren, um how does she come into play there, is she the, because she helps with all branches, correct?
Um I would request that I'm allowed, or that as a, as a board, that we look at the job descriptions. I did bring the job description, there is seventeen things listed under my job description and. I have to say that it would be, this is probably not the smartest thing to say, but it would be impossible for me to. Take that on as a task, I just would not be able to do that. Um we to, I, this gets in later. Is it, is it some of the wording so generic in the job task? Um kind of, I mean, it does say purchasing, but um I I do look at that, I'm aware of what is being ordered. Um I have access to the request lists from the branches, I mean, it's a whole, that. It is a whole thing and it's a lot um as it stands. Actually, I don't want to get into this because that speaks to Maren's job and we're not here to evaluate Maren, we're here to evaluate me, so. Right, yeah, that would be great, I've tried to do that since I've started with staff. And have been met with some resistance from various staff on defining job description roles, so.
I think that's a great.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, that's what, yeah, one really, so we can just start over.
Great, but I think, I think we should be very clear on this because we're gonna have huge blowback from, I believe, other. Staff, but are we absolutely saying that Emily picks all books?
No, no.
Okay.
That what she's saying is perfect, that we go back and look at those job descriptions, I think that's why it. It's just something to discuss more and.
Okay. Then I think we should consider striking that off on the purchasing, because I think that would be.
As long as she, she says she checks with Maren, so.
Go through it, we'll go through it with her.
Yeah.
All right, minutes, I guess.
Minutes provided during board meetings are accurate and when mistakes are found by others, they're corrected in timely fashion. Just little mistakes too, they're like spelling or something. Uh packets for board meetings are always well organized and ready for board members before meetings.
So could I give the next thing?
Yes.
I wrote this one, Emily keeps excellent records. Generally speaking, we never have to worry about the library report to the state. Emily has motivation and ability to deliver on all her library reporting on point and with documentation. She does an excellent job with what we need. She does an excellent job with what we need for our meetings and the reports that she puts together. Her monthly meetings, run the reports are stellar. We especially appreciated the time and effort she puts into our annual budget. We receive them several weeks before and therefore we are able to make good verbal visits.
An area for improvement is the director's report. We, we wanted to work on that, Emily, to change it to. The board needs timely and proactive information to review in advance. An example is, at the recent board meeting, Emily asked verbally for a large expense, the new boiler. That kind of went back to. Knowing ahead of time would have helped the best support capital improvements. This especially will have to be done in view of the improvements suggested by the foundation. It is a fact, the job of the board of trustees. It is in fact the job of the board of trustees to allocate for these improve, improvements as stated in our trustee handbook.
Can I ask some questions with that?
Yes, please.
Um, so a capital improvement plan is something that I have been asking for since I was hired by the board. Um, and I, I've been talking about the boiler in particular since last January, so I. I'm not understanding. The, an example of this, at a recent board meeting, Emily asked verbally for a large expense. It's something that has been under. I thought that the board knew that the boiler was not working well, I kept putting it on in there to try to. Get the forward motion to get that done.
You put them in.
In the October director report, it's. I can pull that one up that I had printed, or you can look back in your finders. So I'm not, I'm.
Just a little surprises, you know.
I'm not sure what other times, I don't think in the last year, so we're, this evaluation is from last February to now, right? Is that, that's my understanding. Um, I don't know if it's a reasonable expectation for, I mean, she's a library director, she's not a, an heating air conditioning. Person to, to expect her to predict failures of the equipment in the library, that seems like. Which is why I was asking for a capital improvement plan, um, and I, I. Have also, there is some. Want to use the right word, it's not inconsistencies or misunderstanding, but. Oftentimes, it happened today, actually, I had put in the branch report about the drinking fountain and then it was in the director report. That is where it becomes difficult as the director of a system. Plus, I'm a branch manager of this branch, so a lot of it's can be duplicative, and so. I, cuz there was a couple of meetings that I did not provide a director report because there was really nothing. That had been going on, I had asked the board if they had any questions for me. And so no action can be taken on anything that I report on. Um, so. I do understand that it can be frustrating as a board to get a document the day of, but. I have been actively trying if there is something that is going to be like that, that I do bring it before. But my general understanding is the report, it's much like the branch reports, this is what happened. Last month, or this is where this is at. I was asked at my last evaluation. About programming, which that comes up later, I believe, in this evaluation. Um, so I can, I can speak to that then, but that also is that difference between what would be considered. A full county program versus branch programming, so we can talk about that later, but.
So can I read from, and this is a class I took from the state legends? And it does say, the director. Um, report, the director then highlights his or her report. The library director should have a prepared written report that was included in the board trustee pad. And approved as part of the consent agenda. The library director only highlights key points of her reports. Any areas for discussion should be separate agenda items.
Yes. That seems, cuz this complaint is about formatting, about adding bullet points, which I don't hear that spoken of in there.
That's a, when you say the director and. Should have it prepared and only highlights key points, that's the same.
What do you mean that? I mean, I think I agree with Nancy, this seems a bit nitpicky.
Just gonna say, even though this was today, I appreciate this, this was helpful, if that's what that's speaking to. I think you nailed it.
Great, thank you.
Yes, and, and if, and maybe some of this. Needs a little better organization, you know, if you report. You, you are correct that you are the director and, um. Did someone else make the report for this branch, or you, you do that both, right?
Well, because technically I am branch manager also.
Or you could actually pull it, put it like you do in some of your, um, you know, what we get. All the little points and then allow the, the branches to talk to it, which I really appreciated. The report by Sammy.
And I actually appreciate that you do the branch report, so we don't have to pull down all the staff and have three people working for the one-hour meeting. So that we can, I appreciate that you take those tasks on.
Yes, please. Yeah, work is inconsistently. That we're at consistently done well, exceptionally high quality work. Preparation for trustee board meetings is time, see, now remember, this is all of our thoughts put together, so some are different. Uh, work, yes, let's see, preparation for trustee board meetings is time-consuming, she delivers work on time and is organized.
Great, thank you. Nope, that was my understanding.
Productivity, you have twenty, works at an acceptable rate and consistently completes assignments on time. Work is organized, able to prioritize work with some guidance. I cannot remember any incidents of late finding or late completion of state paperwork. Emily also excels at dealing with all the multi-priorities. Programming for the library is well organized and well advertised. Would like to see more reports on what ideas are being considered for programming ahead of time. And not, not only once it is booked and set to order.
So my question about that then goes back to that. Um, director versus branch, so are, is the board asking for more from all branches? Or just from Fort Benton? That's a good point.
Or what?
For programming, it says, would like to see more reports on what ideas are being considered for programming, so are you talking about all programming at all branches? Or just programming at Fort Benton? Because at this point, we never see advance.
Well, I think you did that today in your report. With the quilt guild at that.
Right, and I have, I have actively, I, I believe this might have stemmed from the empower M T programming, but I have tried to be very proactive in. Sharing with the board, what is there, has there been concern, again, this evaluation is for over the last year. Have there been programs over the last calendar year, so basically all of twenty twenty-four that there have been complaints about?
I think there was one.
Which one? The historic three enacted?
No, 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 the one, two, three, four, then. Um, we both listened to it on Zoom, oh, yeah, and it was, it was, um.
I, I think Emily's right, though, I don't. Are we wanting all branches to provide advanced notice of programming, um, like Big Sandy, I think they have stand. Like they have quite a bit of programming judging by their numbers, uh, Geraldine, she's doing. Basically what is not freedom, what is it, the Democracy Project? So are we wanting advanced notice of all that? I, I kinda like not having to decide on that.
Yeah, no, we don't have to decide, I don't, I, yeah, no.
Okay.
We can go to twenty, to number three.
Oh, yeah, I'm done with number three.
That was?
Yep, I think the last one you had is reports are due, are accomplished in a timely fashion, clear and concise.
Okay, that would be good, Emily, all right, good, that's perfect. Yeah, rather than reading it all, cuz we all had copies. Number four, interpersonal skills, we got a twelve, you wanna visit about it?
I would.
I guess I could say, unless you want, I want to say something.
I would like to request what each individual score was without names, it can be. Yeah, just what numbers.
The three sixty report, we reported on it, but you don't do that.
Right, DOTA gave me the averages, I don't have each individual, I only had everybody's graphics.
Okay, so, let me just take a look. I think maybe the concern is what the max score is, is the max score twenty-five, twenty-five? So that means at least half of the board members gave her a zero.
No, there were no, there were no zeros.
Okay. Okay, so, well, I, I'll read them. Um, so she is courteous to others and works well with the team, we have an ongoing problem with the Big Sandy workers which preceded Emily's tenure here. She has tried hard to work with them, but it takes effort on both ends. I have no reports of poor treatment of patrons, complaints by staff of the Big Sandy branch are consistent with past complaints of other directors. The director is courteous and cooperative most of the time to those who come to the library as patrons and to majority of employees. There are discrepancies in accounts of what occurs between some employees under her supervision. This is the area where most growth would be appreciated. As the head of all employees, the director sets the tone and is the leader in all situations. Attitude reflects leadership, if respect is desired, respect should be given to all employees in the same manner during all interactions. This is encouraged to employees as well. Patrons from the Big Sandy library feel as though they are not being heard by the director and assistant director. And are concerned about the current weeding process and amount of books removed. This is concerning as it appears that the majority of the weeding occurred without the head librarian's lead and/or with the patrons of Big Sandy. Community approval. It also appears that blue cloud analytics were not utilized when the final decision of books weeded occurred. When looking at the lists, it is confusing and appears that books were pulled. For reasons other than those given at the board meeting on ten in October of twenty twenty-four. Open communication from the director to board members about the books that were taken would have clarified the situation instead of creating more questions and concerns.
Do you have any, can I?
I do, Nancy, do you have a question?
I think it was very clear, we have a, we have a reading policy. If the book hasn't been used in a certain period of time, it goes with it. Damaged, it can be repaired, it goes, so. I don't understand that.
I, I can, um. When you voted, I, cuz I, I wasn't at that Zoom meeting when you voted to close, to have the weeding and I was sick or something, but. Weeding to me is different than going to the library and taking out eight hundred and, I can't even remember.
Nine hundred and thirty-two books.
Yes, and, um, I think if you would have had more preparation that you were going, that Marin or whoever was ahead with. Was taking out that large number of books, I think it took, it, it took the community by a shock, they were shocked. I was shocked, the Darlene did not know what was coming.
No, and there were.
But they, you know, they.
Couple hundred, I don't know, new books that they brought, pretty. But nine hundred and thirty-two, that's like wise, they're wise books.
Just in this.
Through, there was books that you could look through that show that they have been checked out, okay?
And just in this month, they got sixty new books.
Yes.
So sixty times twelve. They're getting seven hundred books or so.
Okay.
So unless we're gonna add shelves until you can move in there, it makes sense that you're gonna have almost that many pull out every year.
That was a lot.
That was a lot.
But seven hundred new ones, you're gonna have to get rid of seven hundred old ones unless you're gonna have a much less open space.
Um, how much is about a book usually run? And another concern of the community was the price of what the new books would be compared to the ones that were.
One of the things that Emily was within one of the reports that books cost between.
That was not in a report, that was in a Facebook post for our book sale.
Okay. And if you looked at just buying the book twenty, at twenty dollars, that's twenty-two thousand dollars. And the fact that Darlene was not able to be part of this, although she has. Worked at the libraries for nine years, okay? Well, seven years last year, so eight years this year, and she has taken the weeding classes to the state. And she does know her patrons, I think that's the most important thing, she knows her patrons. And so, um.
I would like Janet, where did you get the information that Darlene was not involved in the weeding process? Did you get it from Emily? Did you get it from Darlene? Did you get it from Nona?
I talked to Darlene, and this, and I would like to bring up this too. I'm, I would never accuse anyone of lying, so here's a, of, an opinion over here, an opinion over here, so. You take it as whoever, you know, and so Darlene has strong opinions on that day and Marin has different opinions, so.
So Darlene's statement is she was not involved in the weeding process.
Not as much as she thought she was going to be.
But she, so she was, but not, okay.
The books were still, well, it's, it's her opinion, Marin's opinion, I mean, it's hard to. I'm not gonna say one was lying and one wasn't, cuz I can't.
Well, it sounds like, well, it sounds like if they used analytics, no one's opinion would be used, right? If we purely use numbers, so obviously there must have been some opinions used.
Confused, were blue cloud analytics used?
Were not utilized when the final decision of books weeding occurred.
Well, I don't think you can have it both ways, you can't solely use analytics. And have Darlene's input, right? They're separate sources.
You were there?
No, I don't think any of us were there, Janet. But I would say that this appears to be an impossible, an impossible thing to reach. Or rather, it's complaining about both sides, it's complaining that the local librarians were not used, but also complaining that pure data wasn't used. Those two both rule each other out, right? We can either use pure data or we can use people.
I think the shock of having that many books removed. Was a terrible blow for the community, the patrons and for, um, our library, the library in Big Sandy. I think if, would have been handled differently and there was more, yeah, we're gonna probably come in and take, or a deep. A deep dive, is that what's in a ma, an email, I think.
Maybe we need to put the li, the books back on the shelf then, where are the books? We, we can put them back, right, they're books, usually here you keep them for the book sale, right? So.
Were sold, the books are gone.
Okay. Well, that must have been some money. So we can purchase some of the ones that are.
The books were given away, we did not sell them at a sale.
I think this books are set aside and the whole situation.
So can I give my, you're right, there, there are different.
Yes.
Stories, so can, since this is my evaluation, can I give my experience that day? So we went up. To do that. Um, I was there, so I'm, I'm not sure the comment about, um. It appears that the majority of the weeding occurred without the head librarian's lead, I don't really understand that, I was there. And then. The fact that. Marin and Darlene, this is what I saw when I was there. Marin and Darlene went around together. Like a book at a time. And, um. Marin asked on each book. If Darlene felt that it needed to stay in the collection.
Did that, you did that, they did that nine hundred and thirty-two times.
We got a lot more done, that was part of it, knowing that it was a bigger number than maybe was anticipated, we were able to get through it faster than we thought, we thought it would. We got a lot more done. That was part of it, knowing that it was a bigger number than maybe was anticipated. We were able to get through it faster than we thought. We thought it would take. More than one day, but working together, Sarah and I worked on taking off barcodes and marking out. Stamps and things, but. And that's fine. But that is my, it's my evaluation, that is my. My, my, my memory, that was, that was my experience. So the next one, emails are often, these next two I have a question about. First one, emails are often clear and concise and to the point. Open communication face to face without the apprehension of always being taken the wrong way would be, would be and is appreciated. When those communications occur. And then more efforts have been made to reach out via phone and in person to discuss issues that have been brought to the director's attention. This results in clear understanding on both parties' positions. So I understand that these are different comments coming from different people. So this, like Nona says, just has been talking about, different people have different experiences, so.
Yes. So, and, and, and we can't say, I, I'm not going to say anything about anybody, you know. I mean, we can't tell who, who really told the truth and who didn't, right?
Well, this is, to me, these are. From board members' communication, I guess. Am I misunderstanding that?
Yes, no, they are.
Okay. Or communication with board members and all with staff?
No, this is, no staff, no part of this.
Right, so these, but I'm talking about when it says. Emails are often clear and concise and to the point, is that emails to board members or to staff? Okay. Um, community, a feeling of fellowship with a group of people who share something in common. Big Sandy is a community. They have a sense of belonging and an interpersonal connection. They tell their own story and live the furthest from the county seat. They have to be self-sufficient, have a community spirit. And be genuine, but they believe in each other, have the same interests, values and goals. Emily does not value that or commit the same resources to them. There should not be competition between libraries or their patrons. Um, I would like the board to provide examples of how I do not value the Big Sandy community. How I have shown in my actions that I don't value Big Sandy.
But what resources? I would say one then, so when we were talking about Big Sandy and I said that. They, um, there's so many things there, and you question when people came in. Whether they can be checked off or not. Let's say the ladies come in for coffee in the morning and they visit, okay. There's gentlemen that come in and read the newspapers. About in the afternoon, parents come in with their small children, they read books, they have interaction amongst themselves. At four o'clock, I said that the kids come in and they study together. And you said, why can't they do that at their own churches?
I don't remember ever saying that. Was this at a board meeting?
Yes, it was, and I said.
I don't remember that at all.
Well, you might not have, but that's where they can do it, because churches have openings that they can do it there.
Janet, I, I have to disagree with you. I, I have never.
You know, it struck in my mind, Emily, so that I have not forgotten that, okay?
With Janet?
Have an excellent, maybe, so let me just, you weren't there, I mean, you, you're not, I'm speaking to a teacher. So you did, and then I said, the young children, they help the kids do their, do their studies. And then you came back and said, well, people, and then the parents come and they wait for the kids to get out of their sports. And they visit. It is really a huge community.
I, I've spoken to that in the past, how it's, all the branches are different. And there's more of a community center. I've never told them that they couldn't mark down those patrons or keep.
You said they had to keep track. If they came in, the women came in in the morning and they came in in the afternoon. You could not mark and then to get again. I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, have they done that?
I don't know, but I mean, it's the idea, I'm trying to stress how.
So I don't see that as an example of withholding of funds. I don't, I don't believe that happened. I have a separate, I have a separate question about that. Or commit the same resources to them. I, we've had a lot of discussions on how the board sets the budget and the resources, so I'm not sure how that is a reflection on my job performance.
Will you generally give us the numbers? We, and we can work out numbers and all that, yes, in our budgets.
So how is that a reflection on my job performance?
You put the numbers in about the books.
So there's.
Are you talking about the?
Yeah.
Okay, when we had a meeting in Big Sandy, and I do apologize to. Yeah, you, that's it. Um, you were on Zoom and I cut you off, I did. And you were asking how to the board, let's see if I thought this right. How does the board, how can Big Sandy have these biggest scores? And um, I just feel that there is such a competition and not so much the whole town. A Big Sandy versus, versus Fort Benton. And, and to say to us, can the trustees, do the trustees know how many people are in there that day and that day? Well, there is no way to tell. And how, how can we tell? If Fort Benton has done the same thing. See there, again, there's these people and these people. And how do we know who is, who is correct and who is not correct? Because.
But I don't know if what the public comments on is a fair thing to pull into a job performance evaluation.
Are we both talking about those, are those reports though?
No.
Is that what you're asking about?
Sissy, Sissy called, Sissy did a thing on the. She wanted every board, tell me if I'm wrong, she wanted board members and trustees to give a number of. How many people showed up in there? And, I mean, I, I just.
But, but I don't think Sissy's in Emily's control.
I think, but.
I think we're getting away from.
Okay.
I just dropped.
Okay, respect, respect should be a positive reaction regarding feelings, rights and position of authority. Disrespect is insulting and not responding. One's position and being rude and not courteous. She wants respect, but does not give her own trustees respect, especially in the case of myself. Emily enjoys when the public disrespects the board and she even pits the board members against each other. I would request examples from the board of that. I don't remember such incidents. Uh, I do remember last year there was a lot of. Conflict against the board, but I think it was not.
You better.
Well, no, I don't think it was based on Emily. I think it was, you know. That was on the petition was going on, and I would say Emily was as far from that group as possible. So I don't understand how she's pitting. People against us.
I've never felt that way.
A patron, someone, someone that was here. I mean, and that's bad to say, that's terrible to say, a patron and not know who it is, I, I'm sorry.
It was on a Zoom meeting?
They said there was Zoom meetings and they could notice from Emily and maybe. Um, Fort Benton people, the bad looks that were given to me and Janet.
That I gave to you?
That's, that's, that's what that is.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. She is non-verbally pitting us against each other with looks. And she needs to improve that? Is that what we're giving a employee as a job performance review? Yeah, I don't know if we can do that legally. I don't think we can um, tell people they can't look at us. Right?
Yeah.
Okay, interpersonal skill. This needs a lot of work. Would really wish for you and Big Sandy librarians to mend fences. We earn respect when we give respect. This is an area that needs much work. I really would like you to give them their discard powers back. And the giant purge in November hurt the whole community. As with the librarians, calling for a special meeting to weed was wrong. Patrons in Big Sandy feel that they are not heard from the staff at Fort Ben.
That was weird.
Okay. Um, so I have a question about. So about giving them their discard powers back, so. In light of the concerns with the amount that was weeded. Are you asking for more weeding to happen or for not weeding to happen?
They have asked. They, they want to discard. Is that what they're missing? Is that the power?
So am I, am I being reprimanded for weeding too many books?
No, well.
And then they want to read more books?
They want the power to discard back. And they, and they said it's gone. They can't.
To talk about in job descriptions?
Great.
Is it something that is? In my understanding, is every branch has their ability to discard. Um, that's something that librarians are expected. Is that correct?
So there is more that we can talk about it in job descriptions later.
I think that's, I think that's something that we should.
I would like, one more follow-up question is, I would like guidance from the board. In what mending fences looks like.
Yeah, and that's why we want to, I think we need to discuss goals.
Okay.
And. That was a goal for all of us.
I think there's a previous comment about it being a two-way street. So are we also gonna set goals for the other librarians?
I think the whole, I, I think. It all needs work.
Okay, so yes.
A lot of work.
I think we all want to move forward.
Yeah.
That's my understanding and my hope. And I think that's what we've been trying to do.
With the librarians, yes, yeah.
All of this aside, I think the bottom line is we want to have. Goals that Emily can have say in and that we as a board can approve on. And move forward that are time-sensitive, that are. They're, they're maybe, they're not just like a simple statement. There's something that Emily can meet and help her see that she's accomplishing what we have.
And am I then going to be scored on if that relationship is not improved?
No, I don't think that's a fair thing. That's why I feel like there has to be goals for.
Thank you.
Sides.
Okay.
A hundred percent.
That makes sense.
And Nona, do you have, did you bring that as well? That sheet of goals?
So can we, we can keep going through this?
And, and that might be another.
Okay. Number five, safety seventeen. Follow safety rules and regulations exceeds departmental standards. I believe the library branches continues to be safe locations, ensure safety of patrons and staff. Currently is pursuing a capital improvement plan with the foundation members and board of trustees to continue to reach fully. Full safety measures throughout the library. Number six, judgment and decisiveness is a twelve. Out of twenty-five. Usually makes logical, sound judgment, rarely jumps to conclusions, searches out information to make decisions, sufficient performance in stressful. Or new situations. Um, Emily is decisive when she has the ability to make the decision. She has often struggled with some decisions due to wanting support from a divided board of trustees. Um, April of two thousand and twenty-four, lack of professionalism was displayed along with poor judgment and decisiveness. During the acquiring of new board members. Board members resumes, a letter from a patron from a previous year, two thousand and twenty-three. Was given along with her resume to the board of trustees. This act shows a serious lack of professionalism. Patrons are entitled to opinions and to express those concerns and opinions at free will. They are the taxpayers and whom the entire library organization ultimately are, and then it ends. Um, to perform this type of act and to use letters where patrons are expressing concerns against a taxpaying patron. Volunteering their time and searching to help fill roles shows poor judgment and extreme disrespect. Especially for a managerial position who is ultimately charged with keeping those letters on file. The library as a whole is a place of neutrality, free from political narratives and specific ideologies. The director, being the face of the library, is required to ensure the library remains in this position at all times and in all situations. To perform this type of act is completely against a place of neutrality. And was an act against someone who did not completely agree with what was occurring in the library during that time. We should, as an organization, always be open to the voices of the patrons regardless of their point of view. And definitely not use those concerns against them. This instance shows what some people do fear, not being heard by the director when their concerns are voiced or being acted out against. When they do voice concerns. Um, new comment, Instagram profile, F B T B R. Is this a personal profile or one that is meant to be linked to the, to the Shoto County Library?
My question.
Okay, so, um, I thought we had resolved that, I mean, you are new, so, yeah, so that is my personal one. It's linked in the sense that. To, like. I have my personally, but it's a separate page different, so like the library is also.
I think we have to be careful with that because I'm having patrons reach out to me. I asked them to reach out to you too, but it, I don't know if it's gone that far. So that's why I put it here, so we could have that discussion.
Um, so I, can I read the next comment and then I have?
Yeah. Or you can just ask me questions.
Yeah, there have been concerned patrons reaching out because the F B T B R Instagram profile states Shoto County Library. So I looked at that again today and I don't understand where it states.
I will.
I often tag the library, like the location as the library, because the books are available either through the system or.
And maybe that's where people are getting confused.
Okay, so I had someone at the courthouse use the example that if. Someone were to go stand in front of the courthouse with their tax return in their hand and say. F the government and then tag the courthouse. Like, like that doesn't mean that it's a courthouse opinion, it's just where it was. Sure.
Just for reference, and so I understand it, because then I can answer.
But that is another thing that I have actively been trying to be aware of since it came up before.
I was under that understanding as well. And if this is what you're talking, no, that's the wrong one. Right here, right at the top of it.
So this was, I mean, I got it from Libby.
No, I'm just concerned with this part.
Right, so I take it that's like the location is the. Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Available through the library, yeah. Yep, um, and often if it's not available through the library or through Libby, I will state that in the, in the post.
And it was John Tester's autobiography, it wasn't Racy.
Sent, it was political and as board members, we are supposed to keep it neutral, so it just was.
That makes sense.
But she answered that, so we could take it out.
Yeah, so that, yeah, okay, um, so I won't finish that one.
The last one was, we've talked about that, right? That's always.
Sure. At the M L A convention in two thousand and twenty-four, Marin and Emily led a workshop where. As they mocked the trustees of the Shoto County Library, two attendees, of which one was a librarian. And the other was from the Montana State Library Commission, these individuals reported. That the Mirage remarks under the direction of Emily were imprudent, rude. In contempt and dishonorable. One report was made that our board. Quote, is as old as the hills and probably hadn't read a manual since nineteen eighty unquote. As a whole, no one there was able to direct her elsewhere as she kept writing up the same directive. Such. Disdain as a, is a discourtesy to the time the trustees give to the board. The board should have a say about what our staff says or does at a state convention. It is that not, it is not a small cost to send them there when they are being disrespectful. Would you like me to speak to that?
Sure.
Um, I think that the comments were taken out of context. I mean, I just honestly.
So nothing was.
There were no names.
I know, and you can say that. Yeah, I also said that too.
Was she presenting or did?
We were a panel. It was Marin and I and Suzie. Mine slipped. Suzie from Great Falls, um, talking about when challenges come to the library and things like that.
Once reported that no one got another word in that twice. Because it was constant that went back to Marin talking. And we have had Marin talking before. And she was a whole lot of this and that and.
So I need to come back to, is this an evaluation of my job performance or an evaluation of Marin's job?
Well, because a question was asked of you. And of Marin.
You are Marin's boss.
Right.
Well, then, I guess it would. You would be. You would be responsible in a small way to, she has to follow what you, if you would have stopped her then. That would have been correct procedure if you just let her.
So are we, are we asking?
So are we, are we asking her to refrain from? Maybe running workshops at future M L A with Marin? Is that what we're?
What does Marin ever get to be? Do you, you do?
Yes.
I would say we've had some extremely disrespectful stuff said to us right here in this room, so. I'm not terribly worried about stuff that's getting said M L A. I imagine boards are the butt of many jokes at the M L A.
Well, I think there were two people that. From the commission and then your lady that reported back. That said this had gone on when they were upset. State commission, the very tall people that are appointed by the government.
Right, but I mean, I think we have to take that on as board members.
Obviously wasn't on the board during this time, but I guess I would hope in the future that. You would end a conversation like that if it actually did go on. In that. Long.
And so and then that also goes back to what Nona had said before. Because that is not how I remember it happening. Not saying that that's not what was said or done, but that. I know in that moment, but am I going to be more cognizant of of it in the future? Yes, I am.
I just hope you tell us if they're super funny.
Okay. Um, so to say that a concerned patron told you to surprise big sandy librarians was so wrong. Be the kind of leader that I think you can be. And then there's um, parts about Marin again, um. So I need some clarification. I'm I'm being told earlier in the evaluation that I don't listen to big sandy patrons and now I'm being. Told that when I did listen to one. That it was inappropriate.
It was, it it wasn't, it was just said a concerned patron. I have that email.
Right, I had a concerned patron.
Patron, it doesn't, I don't know where the, but you said. Go, the patron told you.
It was a big sandy patron that said that.
Do you say, do you think that's? What, what is your opinion of that?
Of what?
Of going in and surprising him. A patron, if she, if she suggested go in and surprise him, is that? Good?
I. Think it should be fine.
I would like.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't ever go looking for.
I would like to say this is the only place I've ever been in my entire life where the idea that a supervisor will go to a location. During open business hours is crazy. I don't understand the idea that a supervisor can't go to the library when it's open. Like, I don't understand that at all. I, if someone ran. All the Albertsons in Great Falls. It would not make any sense to say, how dare you stop into the store when it's open without letting us know. Like this, the whole like surprise thing, I don't understand at all because it strikes me that if the library is during its open hours. Any of us should be able to go there without notice. Like, does that make sense? Like, when the, you ran a bar, right? Or your husband did, or maybe your son? Josh, like if it's open. It would make sense for the boss to stop in.
I think where it gets sticky, Emily and I have had this conversation is where. We've had employees say that they get anxiety over it and that's concerning and Emily is aware of that. And I think that's something that we can discuss in our goals on how to better approach that.
Yeah, right.
For for everyone involved so that we can move beyond this.
And and I would just say that if you take a job. That's something you're gonna have to deal with. Like, and it's, it does terrible when you have a medical condition and stuff like that, but I mean. I think that that's probably almost more on the other side that you're seeing your supervisor unexpectedly. And maybe like more staff meetings would help that.
And maybe that's something we could set as goals. It's just, I think we have to consider. Employees reaching out to us too.
That makes sense.
Even though we're not the supervisor of that, if we're having. We're having those concerns brought to us, we have to address it and we have to talk to. Each other about that and how to make it better.
Okay.
Okay, um, supervisory skills twelve out of twenty five. Emily gets along well with Fort Benton and Geraldine staff. We have received two letters of support from staff. The only complaints are from staff that have been unhappy with past directors as well. Big Sandy patrons wrote letters to the board about the discarding of all the books. This is another area where skills could be improved. Once again, attitude reflects leadership. There have been employee complaints. That have not been addressed while there are employees. While there are employees that feel like they are heard and understood. There are others that feel like they have not been heard or completely ignored when expressing their concerns or needs. Does the board have examples of? That of complaints?
Now, this was mine, that was that email I was talking about Sarah sent to us and that's what I.
So there was one email that Sarah sent that I was not a part of.
I'm talking about the one that. She said to.
You weren't there on the day that showed that email? Or she wrote an email to all of us without including any.
The longer one, like two and a half page long one. Where she kept referring to the weeding as the purge in all capitals.
Um, so the next part is something we've already talked about. So I think this is about the weeding. When questioned further upon what occurred. Answers were not clearly given, but suggested. That micromanaging was occurring. When board members are trying. To understand processes occurring throughout the library, transparency should be given at all times. Regardless of whose umbrella that situation falls. Under otherwise, it seems as though things are trying to be hidden and what was said to have occurred did not. I am looking to the board for how I can be any more transparent than I.
This is when we had our conversation. I just wish we could have had more of a conversation about. The books.
Okay. And I, I feel like we, you and I are have been working on that, right?
Exactly.
Great. Do I read this next one, Janet or or Nona, sorry?
Which one?
At the bottom of page five. I mean, I can keep going. We've already talked about some of these things, so. Okay, um.
Yeah, and I, I just hope. And it's not so. I hope that we can mend fences with Big Sandy. I mean, I'm the person that goes there and and I just wish, I'm hopeful that through. Meetings or programs or something that we can mend fences. Because it's not a good situation and she. She wrote to you guys. Have you ever, had you, uh, did you call her back at all, Kim?
Sarah?
Yes.
No, usually if I get an email. I stick to email. Usually someone communicates with me by email. I stick to email, but. Most of that email seemed entirely to do with job responsibilities. Which to me would.
Reaching out to you.
Right about job responsibilities, um, so we're both from farms, right? Yeah, so to me it was bypassing the chain of command. Which like on the farm, if one of the hired men was mad at my dad and complained to me. I didn't tie into that. I was like, I don't know what to tell you. That's. That's how it is. Like, so my experience is that it goes up. The supervisor is who you contact if you're unhappy with your job duties and most everything that I saw in that email. Seem like basic job duties.
Except that we have. Because Marin had a problem. And you work with Marin in the personal office that you have.
I don't think I was involved with that.
Danny was for sure.
As the chairman. Okay, and I think we've had several discussions about how the chain of command, like as an individual board member. We are supposed to channel it either to supervisor or to the grievance policy or to the chairman.
Did you talk to her about it? When you got an email? I'm just using you as an example. Did you talk to her?
Uh, when Emily got the first email that she was included in, we texted because she was frustrated. After reading the first email, I actually didn't read the second email to a couple of weeks later. But no, I never discussed that with Emily because it seemed. It seemed like I said, like she was, the employee in question was complaining about required job duties. Um, as a board member, I don't think it's my role at all to go in and be like, you don't have to do your job duties if you don't want to do them.
That's my question is, would, did you end up reaching out to Sarah that she knew that you were?
I have tried to talk to her. And every time I talk to her in person, it seems fine. So I'm not, I don't know what else to.
Right, but I think that's where we could help as a board.
Yeah.
Maybe just to foster better something so that you can have those conversations and. We know that. You heard her and she heard you. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, so that you're not in this limbo land and they're not in a limbo land and hopefully we can. Move forward instead of always having. This.
Tension.
Tension.
Well, I can see that, but sometimes it feels like there is. Like it's not operating as a business. Like it feels like if it was operating as a business, a supervisor would have like the conversation of, I don't like these job duties. Well, these are your job duties. Like, does that make sense? Like, we're, I think sometimes because. Of our nature as a board, we go into a lot of trying to handle people's feelings and I don't know if that's effective.
Well, I feel like we need to handle their feelings, but just get to the.
Crux of the matter.
Job is, this is what we're doing. This is how we're moving forward. And this is how we're gonna accomplish it.
So that's, that's what I've been trying to, I mean, I talk with staff. I try to go for my site visits. Um, I usually try to schedule them, but sometimes it doesn't work out. Um, we have. Things that happen here that then mean I, I can't necessarily schedule things, um, be it surgeries or. Funerals or medical things that come up. And so then I'm only able to go when I'm able to go, but I do. Since I have started, I've gone twice a month. Um, we shifted it to. Um, Fridays for time card purposes, um. I can find that email that talked about that. Um, and I try to keep it to that. But, so that's why I'm saying I'm not sure, like.
You're a hundred percent the supervisor.
How else I'm supposed to do it?
Yeah, and I feel like if we, maybe we can, that's why maybe we can all work together to make it.
Better.
And then if it doesn't, then there's other discussions we have to have, I guess.
Okay, and maybe after we go through the job duties, we should schedule discussions with the entire board. And each employee to review, like, these are, these are the new job duties. Like you're hearing it from us and hopefully we're a trusted source.
Yes.
Okay, um. Communication skills thirteen out of twenty five. Emily maintains open, clear communication with all trustees. While thoughts are clearly and concisely conveyed in writing and emails during person to person interaction, especially in board meetings. Facial expressions and attitudes towards some board members are not always professional. This concern has also been addressed by some employees and must be addressed by the board. There should be a consistency in how all employees are treated and managed. I would like to say that in my self evaluation. I admitted that I, I, I did have problems with that, but I feel if you go back and you watch. Videos over time that it has, there's been definite improvement in that area. Um, nonverbal communication can often convey true emotions and emotions that are not controlled. Should not be present in a professional setting while working together as a team. These skills have improved compared to previous years, but is still an area of desired improvement.
We were supposed to, and we were told to give them some goals.
Okay, so I have one more. There's been a lot of talk about tension. And trust and respect. Um, I'm gonna, I printed off an email today. Actually goes back to one of the comments in the very first thing about, um. It's mentioned here, May of twenty twenty four about the chairperson voting. So I had gone back and I looked at that email. I'm also included in that email. It was about the, it was about the open trustee position.
And that was not there.
Well, this is different. It's just in that same email, but it has been noted. And reported by an employee in the courthouse. That Emily took a packet over and she slid it under the door at the commissioner, of the, to the commissioners on Thursday afternoon. This has destroyed any transparency and fair decision making. And I believe a review of the meeting minutes is necessary. This review would confirm the accuracy of the record. And reflect on the information presented incorrectly. So I, I need to say, I need to put this on public record. That that was an anonymous complaint that was made directly to a board member inappropriately. It was untrue, it was unfounded and was later found to be untrue. And. So that makes it difficult for me. There's a lot of, if I showed more respect, I would get more respect. But it has been stated that respect is a two way street. So that was a very big deal. For someone to make that accusation that I lied. And I did something illegal. And it really was never addressed. It was kind of like, oh, sorry, I guess I should have confirmed that. Before sending it out there. Doing my best, yes, I have a read.
And I think, I think I. Went and talked and the commissioners are never there on Thursday.
And their doors are never shut is what he said at the follow up meeting. So that is all that I received. So if there are goals, I would love to hear that.
And we were gonna discuss those to make, could we have to come to?
A consensus.
A consensus on that before we can actually give those to you.
Okay.
How many goals do we have?
Well, everybody gave, there were some like just suggestions and then other people gave goals. So I don't know if that's something that we need to. Have a special meeting for or have, um. A committee for Nona. So that we can, we can do that.
We might be able to just finish it up today.
We sure can.
Like read through them and have a discussion.
And I wonder if we should have, uh. We make copies of these, I believe, so that everybody can see that.
You want me to copy this or?
No, that's yours.
Okay.
I don't. You are, mine is short.
I think you guys can just say them out loud and we can make notes.
And start.
Sure.
I think you guys, you put.
Are you okay? We're gonna be reading yours and yours, Nancy?
Yeah.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Speak as clearly and loudly as I can. Continue to provide continuing education opportunities for the board of trustees. Number two, continue to research and apply for grant opportunities. I would like to see each. Full time staff member complete at least two grant applications per year.
I think if they're not already doing that.
And it says, I understand that Big Sandy might not comply.
Yes, but just.
Because of their busyness.
Continue to push the board to follow a policy review calendar. And to follow those policies and continue to develop a capital improvement plan and pursue those improvements.
And because of the ongoing animosity.
Yes. Which, which.
But. That would be a, that would be a goal I'd like to see. Okay.
Get past. Animosity and all of us can work together better.
Okay.
Oh, I mean, and the branch too, you know, yeah, and maybe that's through job descriptions or. Policies or, I don't know, but coming here when I first came, it was. New of new trustees are supposed to have a. Uh, orientation. I didn't. I didn't and, and I think, um, coming here to the board, you kind of just go. What the hell did I do?
Uh, these were Nancy's. Continue to encourage and push us to work on a capital improvement plan, especially for the Fort Ben Library. So there's a. Commonality. Uh, strategic planning for our libraries. Keep working on expanding programming. Kudos for earning your masters and certification, certification.
That was a disruption.
Keep learning and be aware of changes, challenges and trends in libraries. Be aware of political changes in our nation and where patrons can find. Excuse me, information about them. And then keep trying with Big Sandy. I apologize, ladies, mine are very long. I wanted to give you bullet points that you could have to reach. Um, these are not what we have to do. I'm just. They're, so leadership and slash director tasks. Continue to visit all county libraries bi weekly, setting date and times. That's up to discussion, of course. Write out and email questions prior to visit for employees to answer for you. And branch librarians shall write out any email questions to send to you to answer while at your visit so that the visits may be productive for.
So I have requested that in the past and it does not usually happen. And I'm not sure if I need to request it every time.
Sure.
Or, I mean.
I'm hoping this is.
That seems to me that would feel like micromanagement at that point.
Requesting it every time.
Every time. Well, no, but.
Well, I guess I was just hoping that that would foster a communication.
Well, and like I said, I tried that and it. It's not, I've said it would be really helpful if you have stuff to send me before.
Sure.
Or jot things down as they come up because I forget things too.
Right.
Um, I try to put stuff in my planner as it comes up or I don't, but that, that is something that I have tried to do before.
And you've sent the emails about what you would like to discuss as well.
Yeah.
Perfect. Perfect. And then set short-term goal, goals with employees to work on between, excuse me, on together between those visits in order to accomplish tasks needed to be completed at each site. Uh, my second one was programming.
You want me to read this? It's your throat.
I apologize, I'm at the end of a cold. Explore community surveys to better understand patrons' wants, needs, and each library community. This is something we can also discuss further with our strategic plan. That's what I'm more looking at here. Consider paper copies to fill out. We discussed that with Cara. And placing those in schools, library, senior centers, um, and then the QR code for online option. Um, provide social, cultural developmental program like you've been doing, just continue to do that by seeking community input and interest and then ensure that neutral environment like we've always talked about. Um, the strategic plan for assisting the excuse me, Shoto County Library Board of Trustees in completion of that plan. And then clear, clearly, I think we talked about this at a board meeting, that's why I put it on here, is clearly outline along with the Board of Trustees tasks for the board and tasks for the director to be completed throughout the year for betterment of the library system as a whole. And then finally, professional development. In this, I was kind of including everyone, so it's not really aimed just for you, Emily, and we can discuss how to best approach this, but continue professional, professional development while working with staff or governing agencies. Um, team building, continue an education led by a state representative for all staff and board trustees. Continue an education to better foster teamwork, better staff, board, governing agencies, kind of like what we already talked about with Rich. And then continue an education for communication. And then share what you learn with, at those courses with us. Um, let's see, DODAS. Please give the powers to discard back to Sandy, let us work together so each branch can be a bit independent in the area buying books we need discarding. Begin to mend fences with Big Sandy. And with the board's help, hopefully it will all improve, plan site visit with them, with short, some short-term goals that could improve your relationships. Help the board to make our monthly meetings not so scary and serious, they are stressful. Let us work together and be a better board. Better communication with your staff and the board for all of us to work on. The Board of Trustees would like to know how we can help you in the year ahead. I don't have your list.
Okay, my goal one was having more effective and productive meetings. According to the state advisor, we need to put our minutes, planes, branch reports, ru- report numbers, except when the consent of Linda, so. She said this would be benefit in that spaces of the children has on the call for public, so that was. For all things contained in the consent of Linda. Two was on the reading, um, about policies and to show direction for said libraries, so the lead to professional leadership of all library employees. And, um, and three, long-range planning is an excellent idea. It is important to have a clear vision for all the library's future. And then I just quoted the Montana Code Annotated that has, gives the exclusive control of powers and duties of the library buildings and of the pitch and, um. So, but then just add, we want to enable each library to better serve their community. And the last one is set up equitable policies and the need to establish goals for the staff and the director and also for the trustees. And understand the roles of each, so allow the board to engage and so that they have some, they can make good judgments and able to communicate the decisions clearly. And while all means be respectful.
Can you repeat number one?
Having more effective and productive meetings, according to state advisor.
Okay, so that would be a chairperson goal, right, not a, because I don't have control of the meetings. I would like to ask you all to look at your goals and I would like you to pull out ones that specifically have to do with me. What I can, what I personally need to work on. Look at all of your goals, take out any ones that say the board will work with the director or.
So things that are a hundred percent her control. She would like goals that she can.
Should have prepared a written report that is included in your board.
The, the director report, is that what? Director report included in packet.
Maybe packet and it says.
No, that's fine, that's, I heard you the first time, it's okay. No, it's not. I, I have director report on the agenda and sometimes I'm able, I sometimes do it before and I sometimes do not.
I think two of us have, you know, um, worked with the, um, library collections. The needs of the community.
So you want Emily to take over the weeding?
Collections and weeding are different. Um, but we do for selection. Um, we have, there are standing Google documents where they, both branches add their, what books they want to have purchased, and I think we have talked about that before. Um, and then weeding, it was in last month's, uh, branch reports. Or was it this month's branch report? And Sammy Jo talked about, she had pulled books and set them aside in the back, and then Maren and I went up and then we brought them back and Maren discarded them out of the this is, I mean, we, and that was why we all went, or not, we didn't all go up together, but why we went up together. So, but more in collection development and weeding. Jen, is that what it, collection development and weeding? Okay. Collaboration.
Collection development is altogether different, you've got a policy for that. It's more about.
Well, that's what collections are, though. Okay, thank you.
I would ask, how many grant applications do you currently do? Because I know you guys get one from Town Pump.
Um, so Town Pump, which opens March first, so I haven't been able to, we got our postcards, though. So I did that one. Um, Liberty Clay Witter is from the foundation. I did apply, the Humanities Montana. Um, I've done a book kit grant, which Sammy Jo also did last year, and then I did the one that for Hassan Davis. Um, Big Sandy has done, I don't, I think it was in twenty twenty-three, but they've gotten computers, they got the Egg West Grant and a variety of, okay, things. Right, yes, and Sammy Jo has, it's written her own.
Okay, so you're already above.
Yes, we are already, I, I, I will not say that each staff member is writing two grants a year. I mean, like, it's not that many, probably, but, um, as a whole. Um, to me, that's part of the branch control, right? If you find a grant that fits the particular need of your branch, then you definitely are welcome to apply for those grants.
Okay.
Okay, so I have director report included in packet, collaboration, um, with the collection development and weeding, or collections and weeding. What else? That is just, is something for me to work on.
Did you have ones you brought forward?
And that's where I was asking that you were. Surveys for Highwood.
So that is one of my, I believe that's one of the things I, I put that at the end. Also, so my three, my three. Um, performance objectives for the next review period is number one, continue to broaden programming for general interest groups by collaborating with River and Plains as well as the Great Falls Public Library. Um. So general interest programs, that means would accessible to all ages. Um, a strategic plan for the Shoto County Library System and expanding services to the community of Highwood. I'd like to say there's not bullet points for that right now, because it's just a wide goal. I do not want to build a library in, in, there's already built a library in Big Sandy. I don't want to build a library in Highwood. I don't want to have a library in the school. I don't, I, it's not anything, I want to explore expanding services to the community of Highwood. There's a lot of different ways that that can be done, and that is my.
And that was where I was touching on.
Yeah, and I want to have, I want to do that, I want to get, yeah. So, but I feel in past communications about this, that I need to wait from, for direction from the board of how to proceed.
Also probably coming at our strategic plan.
So, hopefully, yeah.
But I still think that maybe this is best for you to do is make those, um, surveys the paper copies so that more people respond. I think the QR code was lost on an elder population, and I don't mean any offense to that. Struggled with that. And then putting that, and I know the hotspots in Highwood, I'm from there, that they would, that they would go to.
Great. So community input from Highwood.
Well, I think to, in, in order to move forward and know how to better serve, I would, we have to have their input.
Right, yeah, and I agree with that, that's great.
Also coming in our strategic plan.
Right, and that's kind of.
But I still think that can be a goal for you to reach as well.
Terrific, um.
And can I just break in? Did you send us your self-evaluation?
Yes, she did.
Do you want a copy of it, Kim?
No, I can find it on my phone, I just didn't want it to be on my phone, if it wasn't there.
And then I know you're already doing the reach out to your librarians. But maybe just put that on there so that we can have you checking that out and saying, I am doing.
Like continued communication.
Yes, please, yeah.
Okay, so my question about that.
Yes.
Um, is, because there, it was brought up a little bit in mind. Um, so you mentioned scheduled visits, which is fine, like that's so do you want that communication to look like email communication or phone call or in the site visit, person-to-person, or, uh, like just a combination of all the things, or?
Think, and you've said this before, emails are good because you have that documentation that you did it.
Okay.
And that's me saying that, so everybody's input is warranted there.
What do they respond to this to?
That's a good point. What do you get less from your employees? When do they respond to?
The what? What?
I said they don't always, always respond to. Your emails are different than their emails.
Yes, I was, I was told by the board in the past that my emails were too long, so that is another thing that I've really been working on, trying to bring it down to a more digestible amount. Well, I, I mean, that, that is one of the things that was brought up, and so that's one of the things that I worked on, and so I want to make sure that that is a goal that I continue to meet. Well, my three were the three that I included.
How can you break your goals down so that you have?
The smart aspect of it?
Yes, uh, just so that, because I don't see a big goal like that, something that you have to reach every bullet point. In my mind, there's things that you wire to or aspire to, and then if they're not met this year, you just move on to next year. Do you know what I mean? That's a, that's the goal of a smart goal, at, at least as a physical therapist, that was my goal when I set those goals for pa- patients, so that we can move on the next time we met. Does that make sense?
How do you, how do you feel about taking the input you've received? And we can give you a list of all the goals people listed and coming back with us next meeting of like, here is what you see is these are goals that are in my control. And we can discuss them then, because you know what you do more than we do.
Then there's, you have the input fro- from us and we have input from you and then that helps us all move forward.
Okay.
And feel free to respond to some of the goals with, I already do this, this is already accomplished, um, that'll help our knowledge of. Yeah.
You have any other questions for all of us? And how, and I think one of the things we really want to know, how can we ask help of you?
Yes.
And moving forward.
Yeah. I.
You're always asking for direction.
Right.
Helpful in the direction.
Yes, this, this communication to me directly is very helpful.
Perfect. And that's, I think, what our goal as a board is from this meeting, is that we can say what needed to be said and we can move on.
Yep.
And I would say that if you get emails from any board member that, um, you know, make you feel like you're in a dangerous position or that there's some sort of lack of trust, you, I think, know knowledgefully how you can forward that to all of us legally. And I think maybe, you know, you can just say, I receive this. I was, I would like the board to be aware, but just be like, hey, this is what's going on. I don't want to handle this one-on-one and have it become a bigger misunderstanding.
Okay.
But I think that.
Through the whole board.
Correct, right.
And I think that's been.
Well, except for the, for the board chair, communication with the director, right? You and I can commu- board chair and director can communicate one-on-one. It's supposed, that's the, the chain of command of that.
You know.
Um, I, I think to be fairly kosher, there is not an action item, right, for this?
No, because that would have been a goal and we need to.
But, um, I'm not sure at the beginning of the meeting if there was a call for public comment.
There, there was.
No, at the very beginning.
Oh, I see, so the.
But I mean, there's usually a call for public comment at the beginning and at the end, so are we to that? But that's not for me to call, because I'm not the.
We all need to work on a lot of things. Make this board better, to make the libraries better, to help Emily, to be, to help her. I mean, we were here, they said, give you goals that we can help with too.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, not just for you, it's like, how can we be a better board to you to help achieve this stuff?
Great, yeah, thank you.
I would say from looking at, in the whole year, it looks like you've made about six mistakes, so you're doing pretty good.
So, call for public comment, I think, is the last.
Public comment, I didn't sign on the agenda, but I mean, others think of the board. Throughout the year of all the board meetings, I do feel like it's getting better. But I would like from the board, teacher of the library is, if you guys, the board can write a letter to all employees that are under Emily, showing unity and support of your director. That really helps out a lot to show unities, because being, I worked with, uh, grievance boards and stuff, and I would like someone from the board to learn and get educated on the rights of employees, what you can do. Because you, you guys took all the steps to, okay, we need to write this out, we need to go. But I never heard that you talked to a important lawyer of well, how you. And it's a whole different field, also, just, you know, but if you show unity to all staff members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Uh, one again, I want to thank the board, again, each and every one of you for the time that you guys put into this. It is very time-consuming and, um. And it, it takes energy, not just to do the board meetings, but to listen to, to, uh, some discord at certain times and whatever. Just want to thank all of you for being on the board. Also want to just put in a word for Sammy Joey, I think she's doing a fabulous job in Geraldine. I already think she does an incredible job over there. And last, I just want to say, I think we're off a lucky discount for having Emily on our
I'd like to say Big Sandy is very happy with Darlene as her lighter.
Oh, there are more?
I was just going to say, and I know other people had trouble with hearing anything. I could hear Emily, but that was the only one. Is there a way we could put the electronics at that other end of the table and bring that down this way so we can sit around closer to your hopes?
A different setup?
We can, we can take, we'll take that under advisement. Another one?
I think, um, Amy's voice is strong, but I agree, we could all hear her better. And I think that may also be an issue that's going on with the, um, conflict. But the conflict is much deeper. It seems to me that the situation is going on in Big Sandy. Fort Ben Library. Has had a long history and certainly all that uproar about the pornographic books of the cat, you know. Attorney and all the rest of that crap. Has quieted down, but it has not disappeared. Uh, the gentleman who was talking about maybe getting some outside help. I think that would be very beneficial. We are a different community. I've worked as a, as a census worker in Big Sandy and it's a. Whole different ballgame from working here and in Geraldine and in Highwood. Um. There's a conservative element there that is just really tight. And. The conflicts are very communal. They actually go away. There has to be a better way of resolving those things. Without becoming a personal attack on the. Staff that's trying to do it.
Thank you, and your three minutes, thank you. Well, you still have a minute, I'm sorry.
The other thing is, I think that mission statement and the policy statements are extremely important. The way they're phrased and what is said in them and how publicly they're presented. I would love to see at least your policy statements in writing sometime and the mission statement in writing. For the community to read, maybe publish it in the paper, maybe letters, whatever.
They are.
They're aligned.
But yeah.
And your name? Vernicon, right? Okay, thank you. I know you've come before.
I just think that a whole lot of today was all little picky, petty little things about. Oh, she had a look on her face.
Supposed to talk about this.
About the evil, we can't.
No.
You said that earlier today.
Yes, I mean it. You can't talk about the evaluation.
I wasn't talking about the evaluation. It was earlier when somebody said something about that.
No.
Just all sorts of things earlier when you were talking about. Well, I read this or I read that, and then you talk amongst each other, I don't know. I don't remember when that happened.
That was the evaluation.
Yes.
There is someone online who would like to speak to.
Hi, this is Adrian Miller. I'm confused. Why can't we talk about the evaluation?
We were told that people in the back could not talk about the evaluation.
Told by whom?
A human resource.
Okay, well, I, I, I don't know why you had a public meeting. She waived her right to privacy. I don't know why people won't be able to offer comments on the evaluation. Um. So I guess all I would say is, um, I understand you talked with Mako about the format. I don't have any problems with the format. I would highly recommend in the future, you also. Give them a copy of the content. And make sure that the content is something that they're fine with. For example, punishing people for saying things about you is a violation of their First Amendment rights. You are a public board. They get to go and talk about you if they want to. You can't control their speech. I know you want to, you can't in, in. Then, you know, giving them a demerit for that. You're not a private employer. Even in private employers can't do that. I can go to any convention I want and say something awful about my private employer if I want. Um, I would also note that. Giving people demerits for facial expressions is wild. It's one of the weirdest things I've ever seen on an evaluation. I also think it's incredibly sexist, which you guys should understand as a board of all women. Have you ever seen a man? Ever be criticized for his facial expressions? And I will leave it at that. I would just encourage you in the future to actually give a copy of the contents to a lawyer. Before you decide to mark people down on things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Another one, yes.
Um. I would like to just say that I have an extreme amount of appreciation for how difficult it would be. To do Emily's job. I can't imagine confronting a leaky boiler, getting plumbers here out of Great Falls and winter on the way. Um, I would find that very stressful. I've been through state. I've been through state and federal surveys. I know how hard it is when an inspector walks in the door unannounced. I know how horrific it is when OSHA shows up. It's a big deal. So in addition to maintaining the building. And the collection and getting books where they need to be. And entertaining the community and keeping track of all the kids who've come here, um. What a job. What a big job. And I just think it's really important. Um, because many of us have been in situations with nonprofits where we've worked in old buildings and had to handle crises. And it's. Hard to be second-guess because you get the plumber who can come, whether they're charging a hundred dollars an hour. Or two hundred dollars an hour, because you have kittens freezing on the floor at the dead. So. I think it's, it's good to have an emergency plan in place, because it'll happen, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any others?
I do have, yeah.
Hey, yes, in support of, um, Emily. Thank you.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, my name's Denise. I do applaud her for, um. Making some action and she didn't involve you guys in the boiler. Um, how much worse would it have been if she'd have waited for a full meeting and froze the pipes? And you really have had an expense. So I agree. Emergency program for incidents like that would be very important. Or an electrical issue, how old is this building? That might be a good plan for the boards to come up with.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Bill Wood. Not referring to anything in the evaluation. I've been going to meetings here for a while. And it seems like it would just make sense if you cut the Big Sandy Library. Off into their own entity. Just saying. They've got a third of the population of the county.
That might be.
Something to think about. Anyway.
All right.
Next meeting date?
Next meeting date.
March twenty-sixth.
March twenty-sixth, that year.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, good job.